We're going to open this public hearing up and I've got a couple of things that I want to throw out to everybody. If you have not yet had a chance to sign the sign-in sheet, please do that so that we have, you know, names of people who are actually here. And as I said to the gentleman a minute ago, we're going to open it up in a second so that Mike's going to go forward with the explanation of this parcel of land that's down here off of Lot 109. And then we'll open it up after that to questions that you may have. Once that's done, then we'll close the public hearing and then we as a board will take it upon ourselves and discuss what we need to discuss, probably not making any major decisions tonight of any kind. Okay? Mike, you want to start?
Yes.
One other comment to everybody too. The map that you see up on the screen is an earlier version of the most recent one that we have. We weren't able, we were not able to get up on the screen tonight. So if there's anything in the discussion that pertains to the differences, then we'll make sure we point out what we're talking about. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, my name's Michael Todd, I work for Corner Post 9th Bank, I'm here representing Van Hertel Jr. He owns 169.84 acres near the intersection of State Route 109 and Milton Mills Road. He's proposing a more lot subdivision. The lots ranging in size from 2.24 acres to 85.75 acres. The property is located in both the commercial A-zone and the rural zone. Both zones have a minimum lot size of two acres and a minimum lot frontage of 250 feet. All lots will utilize onsite septic disposal systems and onsite facilities as well as overhead utilities. Entrance permits have been granted by the main DOT for all four lots with Lot 1 utilizing an easement across Lot 2 for its access. Will be requesting five, six waivers.
That easement was going somewhere in this range here, from that lot, the small one, coming across to Lot 109, rather than coming through here because of the curve.
The, it's a foot-in-lot, very terrain, predominantly moderate to excessively drainage soils with some pockets poorly to very poorly drainage soils. The, would be requesting six waivers. The requesting waiver for high-intensity soil survey, hyper-geological assessment, stormwater management plans, a phosphorus impact analysis. The requirement that perimeter monuments be stone and requirement for test beds on lots 2, 3, and 4. That basically sums it up. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions out there for anybody?
I have a, I have a question. As I say, I have access to my property from Milton Mills Road, which goes through, I guess, this 85.75 acre, come back up in this area here.
So you think that there's a right-of-way somewhere back in here?
There's a right-of-way that goes right through. It used to be, no, it's going right through that property, through that parcel, yes. Okay? That was something that was always understood and then we found out that, well, it wasn't down in writing, so I had talked to Van Hertel and was wondering what he was going to do with my right-of-way. He's not locked that gate, so I have access going through that way. I want to be able to work on the road and just make sure, otherwise I'm landlocked. And I've been paying taxes there since 19, oh, since the 70s when the property was bought.
Is your right-of-way one of these brown woods roads indicating on the map?
It would be one of the, yes. Now it's hard to say anymore because there's been so many trees.
You think it's this one here?
Yes, yeah. It was used by the orchard farmers, you know, to get to the various apple orchards over the years. Now it's hard to say anywhere, anywhere it is because there's been so much timber that's been cut out of all of this property and...
Which is your lot?
Is it this one?
Yes, yeah, it would be, I believe, sorry.
Apple Valley?
Yeah, the, well, yeah, Apple Valley. Well, there's Apple Valley Campgrounds and then the house behind that. My father and mother, my father bought that property, built the house. My sister Debbie lived there. My parents retired there and they've all since deceased and it's my property. And I want to be sure that I have secured the right-of-way. Otherwise, I'm landlocked and I haven't paid taxes there or taxes haven't paid there since...
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. What's your name and we can find your lot?
Craig Groshens, G-R-O-S-H-E-N-S. I'm sorry, I should have taken down the lot number right there.
It's okay. I don't need to interrupt. Put it right here.
What's this one out here?
I was wondering. Right, okay.
Mike, are you aware of the correspondence that's appeared between Mr. Groshens and Van?
No.
He may not remember, but I had talked to you quite a few years ago and that's how I've been in touch with Van Hertel and I spoke to him.
You may have talked to the owner of the company that I work for.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, you are familiar to me, so, you know, I never forget this.
So it's...
This is a great... Oh. Let's see what that is.
So you're, oh, okay, yeah, no, I see you now on this map. It's got your name right there, your kitty corner to the lot.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
It just touches one corner of this.
Mm-hmm. But there's no, there's no actual drawn-out right-of-way. Say, you know what I mean, it's not indicated on any map exactly where your easement lead...
From what I understand, my father, when he first came into the property, he came through Milton Mills. He bought the property from Brooklyn down in the head.
Right, right. But there's no actual, I mean, when you look at the map, it doesn't go along the property line, it's a woods road.
Yes, it's a woods road, exactly.
Okay.
You say there's a house in there.
Oh, yeah, the house has been there since 85. The house has been there for that long.
What's this road, Craig, coming in from Sandmore?
Oh, that's a road that, you see, my mother was ill and in order to, my father couldn't do anything with the road due to expense. So he actually spoke to both the Smiths, Ken Smith, and he allowed us to use his road going through the Apple Campgrounds. And then the back road was Mrs. Hurd. She, they were kind of deal that my father would plow that road and cut that road for them and he plowed that with the time in case of emergency. My mother was ill, as I said, and we need to have access for ambulances to get in and out.
But that road is not...
That road is not a right-of-way. It was never meant to be. My father, you know, Mrs. Hurd at the time said that, you know, she wasn't going to make a right-of-way, nor have the Smiths made. There are a right-of-way to us.
Is that the one you're speaking of that goes from Sandmore?
Yes, yeah.
Because usually, these are our tax maps and usually they only show up if they're on a deed somewhere.
Yes.
But the assessors take this information.
Right, okay, yeah.
So that must be deeds.
One of the, what was it? It's, one of Mrs. Hurd's sons has a sand pit right back next to my...
Andy Rager?
Yeah, and, yeah, well, Andy is the one brother and then is, no, yeah, it is Andy.
And where would the other road be that comes in from the Smith property?
This one? The Apple Valley?
Yeah, the Apple Valley. His driveway coming down off of 109 going through his campgrounds back past the horseshoe pit down into, into my property.
So there's no house on that property?
I think so.
Is there any building on there? A structure?
Yes, on my, on that, on...
On this law right here?
Yes.
About where is a house, approximately where is a trailer? Approximately where on the law is it?
You see where the lake is right there?
This?
No?
This?
Yes.
Okay.
The house is from what that picture showed, that would be the lake that we're looking out at. Okay? And then if you go up the hill, in between the small lake and the big lake, my sister had a trailer home. The trailer home is there. And then of course from the trailer home is a barn.
So is it, is this the road?
There are three parcels and, yes.
This is the road you'd use to get to the building?
Exactly, yeah.
That means approximately here?
Well, actually, yes, yes. That's, that's the Hurd road you're talking about, right? That would be coming in the back way through the sand pit to the back part of my, of the part of the property.
Well, I'm just wondering which is the main access currently and you're saying it's this road?
Actually, it's the, I have no right-of-way. They allow me, they allow me to turn in from Apple Campgrounds.
If you were going to do that tomorrow?
From Apple Campgrounds.
You would come in this way?
Right. But I happen also driving in from Milton Mills along what is a simulation of what the road used to be.
So if you're waiting this way, which way does the road go?
Back right down through, yes, it comes right down.
It comes like this?
Yes, and right, there's, there's a bridge. Can I, can I come up and just show you?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, please.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
I would give an idea for it.
My wife says I never explain myself properly.
Well, you got a map, so...
It's very fun.
The, the bridge, actually Beaver had dammed up the, the brook and it backflowed over this area here and that was excavated out into a lake naturally, you know, supply. The, the bridge actually comes across here. The house is over here. Up this road from where the bridge comes, there's a little driveway that goes into the back of the house. And if you continue up that road, there's a trailer home on right-hand side and a barn on the left side, left-hand side of the road. And then further up would be the sand pits, you know.
When you say further up, where do you actually mean the sand pits?
Okay, it's right over here.
Okay.
This is, okay, this is where he's been excavating sand for years now. But basically, that's it. And this was always the way. There was a road that came in through this parcel here and that's how my father got down to the property. And when he first bought the property, he pitched a tent there and he walked the property and, so to my understanding, his understanding, that was the right-of-way.
It almost seems like it must cut into the Curtis property.
It, it, it does a little bit, I believe. You know, I'm not that familiar with it, as I say, you know, it's, it has changed over the years. It also cut into, yeah.
The property that we're talking about too comes to this.
Yes, yeah.
And so here's the only common area, so if it's coming this way, it seems like it must cut across...
Yeah, somewhere in there.
And if it's, where's you cross that brook? The right-of-way?
Well, it, the, it, it goes alongside the brook.
What's that brown dog there?
I don't know.
Kind of looks like a crossing, but I don't know. I bet Ken would pull it.
Isn't that what that means?
Is that what that means?
It's like you, that just indicates that...
Here we go, now we have a couple of parcels here.
Indicates the same...
So this is probably the trailer?
Uh, yep.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. You think that's going to be registered?
This is the barn, this is the trailer, that's the neighbor.
Okay, all right.
A circle man driving.
Thanks.
Just trying to figure it out, if there is one right there which could be the crossing from...
Right. As I say, on most parts, we never crossed the brook until we got to the bridge. And that's when my father had put the bridge so we could get over to the house. And so, and then of course, there, there's a road that goes out through the campgrounds up to 109 and also the other road comes through the back way through the sand pit. And that was just a matter of convenience, you know, for my mother's... There you go, that's my...
All right, Craig, I think, I appreciate you coming forward and letting us know what's going on. I'm not sure we're the ones who are going to have, come up with an answer to this question.
Right.
And I think that we probably can't do anything other than listen to what you have to say until, one, at least we talk to Ken, see what he has to say and then, yeah.
Ken Smith, you mean?
No, Ken, uh...
Ken Paul.
Ken Paul, the CEO.
Okay.
So, so he, and he's not here tonight, unfortunately.
I was hoping that Van Hertel would be here tonight because I would have liked to have talked to him in person.
Yeah, I haven't seen him yet.
Yeah.
In the meetings that I've been here with him or with...
Because I know he's, he lives in Scarborough. I've met him a few different times, not at his own home, but over at the old real estate, the Four Corners there where he had the real estate. Is that still there, the real estate office?
It almost, it almost seems like at some point you guys are going to have to get together, you and Van.
Uh-huh.
I don't know that for a fact, I'm just, you know, kind of talking off the top of my head, to be honest with you. But let's see, I mean, we'll take it that step, we'll do one step further, we'll get Ken in here, maybe he can have you come in and talk to him if he's unsure of exactly what's going on.
Right.
And then we'll, we'll take it to the next step.
I know, I was talking to Stan Smith and he said, well, you know, years ago, that's what we did, we just, it was just an understanding, you know? And unfortunately, my father bought the, the property based on that understanding. Okay? So that's, that's the situation we're placed with right now.
Well, I'm glad you picked up on the fact that this was going on tonight.
Well, no, they mailed the, the notice and I just, actually, I drove up from New York to be here today, I was lucky to get here, the traffic was horrendous, but I got here.
But I'd rather hear about it tonight than hear about it, you know, three months from now or something like that.
Good, good, so that's fine. And I'll be able to get your name or your business card or something like that, is that, so?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just the person here on the, the playing board.
Okay.
But you can, the card that you're going to get is the card for the office that you can put down here.
Right, you'd probably be talking to Brandon if he called 917.
Seems like it.
But it looks like you have three ways you could get to the residence in there.
No, yeah, well...
Three different ways.
Yeah, there are three different ways. Yeah, I'd really prefer, as I said, to talk to Van and see if I could get that.
Right, yeah.
Because the other, the other way is not my roads. They're not my roads. So I'm landlocked.
Figure out which way is your legal access, sort of thing, and which, I'm going for that.
I don't want to create any problem with the, you know what, they have a wonderful relationship with everybody around. Mrs. Hurd, the Smiths, my father was well-liked by them and because they liked him so much, they, they allowed him to use their roads.
Sure, sure. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments or surprises? Okay, if there are no other questions, Mike, are you, anything that you could add or comment about or, probably doesn't...
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add other than even if Van and you were able to come to some kind of agreement on easement, I don't see how that would necessarily affect the subdivision. It may affect Lot Number 4.
Yeah. Right, well, we probably would have, if that was as it was to be, we'd probably want to get something written in deed for Lot Number 4 before it was divided, just otherwise this guy might be shut out, so to speak, on that, on that access point if it wasn't in the deed.
And, yeah, they still have to, this has been going on for years?
Well, as I say, I was in my own business, so it's coming back and forth. I'm retired now, so my, my time is being spent more on the property now, so, yeah, I have an opportunity to get in touch with them and be able to converse with them more easily now, you know? So, yeah, I would say it's been going on for five years, you know? And like I said, I just stopped seeing him because I figured, well, let me see what happens. I know he had bought this property and was thinking about developing it and then the codes and everything were changed and he couldn't really do what he originally set out to do. So I was just waiting to find out what was happening with it. Now, the Lord has put this in my, in my mind and I think it's through him we'll find the answer.
All right. Then anybody else comments, questions? Otherwise, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay? That public hearing is closed and I'm going to turn around and open up our meeting, the playing board meeting tonight. And if you have not yet had a chance to read the minutes of the last meeting, please do that in the entertaining motion once that's done. Do you want to start coming up on this?
This?
This is going to be really...
Yeah.
It's kind of like... So we can really...
Yes.
This is going to be really...
Yeah.
It's kind of like... That contains... That contains... That contains... That contains... Doesn't really matter. I still say it's good, you know? It just... What's that going to be?
So we're not going to see correspondence, right?
No, I think we're done.
Did I have the sign?
Like, there's three changes noted in the minutes, but we don't have to, you sent it from...
Right, I sent him copies. He did have a question. I think he's been going back and forth trying to catch Ken. He had a question of the 20, 20 on center.
Oh, right.
Right, so, um, right. So I haven't heard, I should have left it on there if that's not final, but...
You're right, forgot about that.
I did.
We needed to. Well, that's all right, because I mean, if we don't have a draft, it's still unlisted documents, so it's...
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Does the cash bond bond on 10 or 15?
15.
We changed to 15 because that's what we asked the previous, yes. And that was one of the reasons we had to change the mine.
Am we on set?
And he knew that, but didn't get it changed before.
I think he... I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, changes? Go ahead.
Just under the condition, we thought it was 10, 15.
Where are you looking, yeah?
Oh, you're the previous one.
Oh, there it is. Name. You're looking for more than I do first. Do you want...
I did have a, I did have the question on the minutes as well.
Okay, go ahead.
Time after this.
Underneath the second best possible location.
What's there?
On the back.
Was there a mark?
Yes.
Okay.
It says there will be no additional bedroom. I was wondering, I wanted to change it, so it said there will be no bedrooms. But take an additional hour.
There are no bedrooms.
Just, I, just because it was a combo.
What's that?
A half, like a quadruped sort of structure, anyway.
Do you have an extra copy of the chart first? Or you didn't get a copy?
Is there, is there one right there?
It said, "In here."
Sorry.
I think I left a couple, left two ones when I was...
Okay.
If you guys skipped you. Any other comments then?
Yeah.
Or corrections or changes to the minutes?
Okay.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstained? Not talking?
Right, right.
The 41?
Yes.
And to do with the 20 by 20 on center with the trees, we wanted to discuss it when he comes in or, we'll just talk about later. It's clear you what we're talking about, right?
And, and I, I had, I saw Ken really quickly about this, about what Tom's concerned about because Ken had contacted Tom and he understood what he was saying, so he was going to explain it to Tom.
Okay.
And I think that's why they held up on providing the mile-ounce beam assigned.
Okay, that's fine.
Until that gets squared away.
So he's got to get a square way before he can mile-ounce again, anyway, because the way he's going to end up throwing money back in?
Right.
All right, so old business, we're back, back to the Hertel property. And I guess I'm throwing it out initially anyway to anyone with thoughts, questions, and not necessarily about what we were previously talking about at the public hearing, but in general, what we've been talking about over the last few meetings.
I have one quick one that we knocked around before and I don't know whether you saw that or not. Taking you to page 34, 452, 4.522.
On the zoning or on the...
Zoning, yeah. Zoning. Yeah. Residents of lots that are part of a subdivision are prohibited in this zoning district, the zoning district referring to commercial A. The line delineates commercial A-zone from rural zone, takes a little slice out of Lot 1. See what I mean?
Yes.
And I think we would need to know something about the remaining area, that this is, this hasn't been diminished below two acres. See what I'm thinking of?
Yeah. So this is the terms over here, this corner?
Yeah. Do you believe the zoning regulations say that you can't count that?
Yeah, that's what's up, yeah.
Ken said it can be counted as part of the acreage, it can't be part of the building.
Right, it wouldn't be able to.
That was in the...
So that's... The envelope can't go in there, but it can count as part of the...
There's that, there's a rule that's somewhere in there, so you can move it 50, 50 inches in.
Yeah, you hadn't said that.
But it has to be a certain distance from the zoning line.
Yeah, well, it's just something that, it doesn't have to be resolved right now, but my intent would be on it anyway.
Are you agreeing with this part? With that question, the answer to, to what your question was, at least for 452?
Yeah, yeah. It's a, it's not, the substantive part of Lot 1 is not in the commercial zone. Can I continue with another question?
Go to it.
Mike, do you, or maybe Brandon could help us with this delineation of the Nomburg soil area on Lot 4? I'm just curious what the acreage is there, because I think Nomburg is a hydro soil, if I'm not mistaken.
It is, and you can see we, the soil itself is a, well, it rains, it's heavier. And we have delineated the, the edge of the weapon that's shown with the white blue area with the dotted hatch with the green tree symbols in it.
Right, but I want to know the area of that, so that, we have to look at that and see if it's delineated as our team on any of our work or, and this, that might be necessitated.
When you were in the resource protection zone map earlier and then those resource protection zones are shown as the green hatch area.
This was not delineated?
That is not delineated or not.
You're okay with that question?
I don't understand what Tom is asking.
You want us to know if it's in the resource protection or that NA was on the map, on number Lot 4?
It shows a, it shows as a weapon in their legend with trees and... It shows it as a weapon in their legend with trees in it.
Well, it looks like it's like over the aquifer too. No, it says... There's no...
I'm not speaking. Okay, so he wanted to see the resource protection.
Resource protection that's going to come in right in here, this area. It doesn't look like it's coming in there at all.
But it is the aquifer protection district right there.
And that portion would not count towards their lot size if for some reason it should ever come to that.
Can you put the aquifer protection zone on that map?
Yeah.
I think it may help us.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
You can also see that that line's also shown on our...
That's the orange.
You want to see yours?
So, yeah, so the area that Tom's talking about is kind of like about from right here to right here, sort of in this general vicinity. And then it kind of leads down toward Milton Road, right? Like this as well.
Any other comments?
Uh, nope, not right now.
Anybody else? Are we willing to vote on any of the waivers tonight?
Are the waivers on this map?
Yeah, well, right in the middle of the bottom, there's a waiver request.
They're listed underneath the...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
See that?
Yep.
Okay, I think we can probably go through those. We're just breaking up the parcels.
Yep.
Got a question that I should know the answer to, but I don't. Is Mouson Lake, County, or Loom Pond, does they have any state designations as significant... Lakes at risk?
I think Mouson was destined as a lake at risk, but...
I thought they were back from there too, from that. I didn't think they still...
They pulled them back from the...
I thought they pulled off the list.
But they're at watch, I think is what it is now.
Yeah, okay. They probably don't come off and be good.
Do you know, Mike, if it impinges on anything that you may have drawn out here?
According to just in speaking with Ken, he had showed the watershed district, but it wouldn't affect what we're going down here.
As far as you know, Mike, with a Nambur section like this on, the pinches on your frontage, would that preclude putting a road across that area? I would think you'd just be running into a expense and maybe some environmental issues if you were trying to cross through those NA areas.
You get the moment. There's currently a... It was wrote, just... The gentleman that's in here earlier. Says he's used it. If it follows this brown line.
So you were probably going to enter this.
Yeah, we're going to... The proposed driveway is right there. We're going to see approval from...
Oh, wait, I get it.
Took me a while to spot it.
Well, did anybody find that same designation for lot 3?
The proposed driveway?
Right there.
It's right here. And then lot 2 would be here. And lot 1 would be here, utilizing an easement across the...
You guys have gotten DOT preliminary...
We've gotten permits. They have approved permits in those.
Great, thanks.
Right, and that's how you found out that this one needed an easement, right?
Todd, this question, where the curb cuts were on lot 4 and lot 3, maybe you could follow it and look at it close enough to actually show up in both cases.
It's pretty clear cut, isn't it?
Yeah.
Go through the waivers.
I was going to say, is there a motion? We can take them one at a time and then decide if we don't do all of them. At least we can take care of the ones tonight that we think we can.
Are we... We're having made out of mind the notion that this is just residential development then on lots 2, 3, and 4. All right?
Yes, and if it wasn't, they'd have to come back to us, and we'd have to go through this whole thing again.
Right.
Actually, I think it would just come for conditional use, right? Is what Ken said.
But they'd have to come back to us.
As a conditional use, yeah.
I'm just thinking this would impinge on whether we want to give away the unit or not as to the use. If it's residential, am I on the right track here, Mike?
That's all we're asking. If someone buys a lot and they have a different use, then it would happen.
That would be one of your conditions.
Okay. All right.
Maybe lot 1 is questionable.
Yeah? Want to go through those then?
Sure.
Yeah, I think so. I think it's... I mean, it's pretty much just breaking up parcel, we're reading.
I have one thought on that before we proceed. Might it be best to have kind of a provisional thumbs up or thumbs down and then finalize this one when we're back with Ken?
Well, if that's what we're going to do, why don't we just wait?
Yeah, because we might be waiting anyway to find out about the easement to the lot 4.
You actually discussed those on April 6, and he had his input then.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the midst of April 6.
As far as the easement goes, he's obviously waited. They have a couple of buildings out there. They use access over other lots. You can see from the area that was up there, clearly they access to the Sandborne Road frequently. That's well-traveled. You can't see through the tree to cover any type of access. Or he may want to try to get some type of right, or he may have had some kind of license to use it, but I really don't see how that could hold this up. He's been five years in the making.
Well, he said there wouldn't be a chance of that becoming a legal way. He needs to have a legal way on paper.
Correct.
So that we're not creating a... And they only put a man on lot 2.
Well, that lot was created well before this...
Yeah, and it's not the most traveled way into a lot by far.
And as he said, if he was to go there today or tomorrow, he would not go through the wood road.
Yeah.
I think his deed of access is from Sandborne Road, because it wouldn't be on the tax... It wouldn't be on the tax maps unless they got it from a deed somewhere. They don't just put something on the tax map just because somebody said so. So they... I mean, I can find out from the assessors if you like, if that has been referenced.
I think, yeah, just find out if he does have a deed of access from some parcel. Because if he does, then we go with that.
And maybe his father years ago did, who knows? You know, to create something that he may not know.
You'd have trouble when you tried to sell that.
Yeah, for sure. Well, what's your pleasure here? Do we decide we want to hold off? I mean, two more weeks isn't going to make that big of a difference, since we can't do anything official tonight anyway as far as, you know, voting on much else.
I think it's just if you do decide you want those, the two more weeks to get those studies, then it would be important to the applicants, so... And if you...
Well, I think we did go through... I mean, I'm fine with it. I think we went through the waivers before, and there wasn't any major... Right. Ken, if I recall.
All right, we did. And the April 6th...
Was there just some concern on lot 1?
Minutes of April 6th.
There was a little bit, but they provide us with this septic design that just said they were going to bring in material for the leach field, basically, because there were shallow soils on that site. And it can seem, you know, comfortable that they'd be able to create a proper septic of residential dwelling on that site.
Looking back at the minutes of the 6th of April, Ken's only concern was that if we were to vote on the waivers, that it would only include the three large lots. That the waivers would not count for the 2-acre site.
Oh, okay. And we provided the test pits for lot number 1.
So you did a...
So you're not seeking the waivers for lot 1?
Correct. The test pits.
Right, we get number 6.
So there's number 6. Oh, I see, lot 2.
I lost you. What is that?
Oh, number 6 under the waivers, so it just includes... There just has number 6 in the laws, 2, 3, and 4.
Yeah.
These waivers do not include lot 1.
And so that's... That was one of the reasons why there's a new map, too. It's not... Note down there at number 6. Waiver requested number 6.
I'm okay going to...
So they want to take apart? I'm thinking past what we've done, right? Being put voted on them individually, I believe. So is there a motion out there?
I motion we waive the high intensity solar ceremony.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, all in. Motion number 2?
I motion we waive the hydro geological assessment.
Second? Comments? All in favor?
I motion we waive the stormwater management plan at this stage in the process.
Second?
Second.
All in... Comments? All in favor? All right, 5 over again.
I motion we waive the phosphorus impact analysis.
Second?
Second.
Comments? All in favor? 5 over.
I motion we waive the perimeter monuments on the subdivision. Because they were set in 2004 with 5 eights in iron rods.
And you found all those?
Well, what are we waiving on the...
In 2004, we set... 5 eights iron rods. The requirement is a stone monument.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Since we had done the prior survey in 2004, you know, at that time, we weren't required to set the stone monuments, so we did.
Okay.
And you... You've had someone out there found all the rods.
Yeah, we've... We brushed out all the property lines. We set all of the new corners.
All right, so was there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Comment, then? We've already kind of run through. Any other comments? All in favor? And is there one for the 6th one?
I... I motion we waive the test pits for lots 2, 3, and 4.
Second?
Second.
Comments?
With the condition that at the time of development of said lots, that the test pit would be nearby. Which is, I think...
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll be on the red design.
Do you want to say would be?
Will be.
Shall.
You shall not pass.
Sure, that's what he's going to motion. Then we'll go that way. I think you should get a second for the 6th?
Leslie.
Okay. Comments, all in favor? All right, 5 over again. Okay. Anything else then dealing with Van Hertel property that we can deal with tonight? Do we need anything from Mike for the next meeting?
Maybe we could get a... It's just a possible, but maybe we could get a statement from Van Hertel as to whether or not he recalls a conversation about a driveway he's been through this part of the property and his opinion on it.
Would that be in your... Will you to contact him?
When I talk to him tomorrow, tell him how the meeting went, I'll bring up the... Just to get his access to see what...
Sure, just to get a reaction, right?
Because maybe he'd say, "Oh, yeah, sure, they could do that."
He may say, "Who knows, no intentions, I don't..."
Right.
Of course. Okay, we don't, we don't.
Both of whom were really interested in. I think they were pursued it over the past five years.
But obviously, we, you know, everybody here is surprised, you know, with this whole thing, so...
Yeah, I was apparently... He's working with someone else in our office, but...
With your face.
Well, I'm sure it was me a couple of years ago, so I only... You've been in the company, yeah, maybe nine months.
All right.
But if we're on building envelopes, we wouldn't be necessarily be looking at those.
When we decide what's going to end up being on it, maybe? You know, we get to that point when somebody comes back and says, "All right, we're going to put a bunch of houses here on the 85-acre acreage site." Or on one of the 48 acre sites.
And the house that we require them at this level, at this stage in the process, just in terms of...
I think you're getting your cluster of relevance. I think he wanted to see that. I'm not sure you have one of the larger subdivisions.
I mean, we could require one for lot 1, probably, just... But all the other ones are so big, it would be a fairly large general.
Yeah, I think they just kind of had like a...
A general.
Mm-hmm, pretty wide, a pretty large area in terms of where it's possible to build.
I don't really know that he would have any floor plan or layouts that, you know, in mind. I think he tends to sell the lots.
Yeah.
He's not intending to develop them himself.
How about in lot 1? Is that... Is it possible for a building envelope there?
Well, we're showing the building setback line on the plan, so potentially someone could site a house anywhere within that building setback, excluding anything within the commercial area forever.
I think this is really more of a land division than a subdivision, actually, technically speaking.
We're already talking about the fire protection sprinkler systems. You know, that's automatic in a subdivision, so it's kind of, you know, crossing lines. I mean, I'm comfortable with that. Really have, I think, at this stage in time, those big ones. And go from there. We'll talk, we'll see if we can find out anything more about the driveway. We'll talk to Ken tomorrow. Are you in contact with Ken during the two weeks span between meetings typically?
Sorry, Virginia, I didn't get that.
Oh, sorry, Bill, I read.
I could certainly try to...
Yeah. Or, you know, when I get the talk from him tomorrow, then we can, you know, maybe he'll be in touch with you, we'll see. Anybody else have anything about this particular deal tonight? Okay, let's move on then. Did you leave anything about for us tonight?
Hasn't been quite, but there's nothing to ruin.
So is there then, I guess, unless somebody else has something, is there a motion to adjourn?
I just wanted to ask about the town meeting really quick. And you're not going to be able to attend town meeting?
Yeah. Ken's going to be there.
Ken's going to be there.
He's going to present it.
He's going to be there.
I can't be there.
Not going to be there.
I'll be there.
Well, I'm just, you know, because if we get questions from the audience about why the planning board decided to do ARB, I would just want to who's going to be there.
You're going to adjourn? No, I won't be there. No, I won't be there. Anything else?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor? Thanks for being here.
Thank you.